Thank you for your patience while we got the technology straightened out. I'd like to call the special meeting of the Salem Board. It's 5:08. People, please stand towards the front.
I pledge allegiance to the new class of United States of America. And this is the Republic where we should stand, one nation, united in this small, liberal, and free.
Any just have any notes to the agenda?
We do not.
I just have my turn to look over to the presentation.
Good evening, everyone. As you know, this special meeting is related primarily to our impending proposed capital project that we are looking to schedule for a referendum vote in December, on December 5th. This evening, we have representatives from fiscal advisors, mosaic architects, as well as Schoolhouse Construction. And Janine Coruso is here from fiscal advisors, and she is going to come to the podium and present to the board some of the financials related to the borrowing and aid ratio for the proposed project. So thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me.
Does everyone have, so we have a draft of the presentation?
Yeah, okay.
Everybody has it? Okay. Good evening. What I wanted to do tonight is just give you sort of a quick overview, and then we can go into any questions you may have, because I've tried to sort of boil down a lot of information into this one piece of paper. So, starting out, the total cost of the proposition is, or the total cost of the capital project as proposed is $14,710,059. And the board has decided, and the district has decided, to utilize 1.5 million in, from a capital reserve fund, so that the net amount to be borrowed, that you'll be asking the voters to approve, would be $13,210,059. Some of the financial assumptions that go into the numbers that I have provided, the district's current building aid ratio is 81.6%. The state assumed interest reimbursement rate is 2 and an eighth. And what that is, is they determine each year what the assumed amortization interest rate will be, and that is based on the debt that was issued in the prior year. So that's actually going up a little bit, but there's still a mismatch, unfortunately, between where rates are right now and where that rate is. But it was as low as, it was actually below 2%. So, that number is utilized to come up with the building aid assumptions. The bond amortization period is 15 years, because it's reconstruction work. If it was an addition, it would be 20 years, and if it was a brand-new building, it would be 30 years. But this, in this case, this would be amortized over 15 years. And the estimated composite bond percentage is 93.28. You know, everybody strives to have 99, 100%. In this case, right off the bat, the greenhouse piece of this project is not aidable. And then, we do take the numbers that we received from Mosaic, and then we're just, we just start out on a pretty conservative estimate there, so that we've sort of looked at everything. We've looked at the maximum cost allowance. We've looked at the different projects, and that's where we're coming out as a conservative estimate, that that estimated composite bond percentage for all the projects would be 93.28. Then just, does have an excellent bond rating from Standard and Poor's. It's rated A+. And the estimated bond interest rate that I use is 3.75, which I'm sure does seem high, but right now, I think that that's a conservative number to use. Hopefully, by the time we actually issue the bonds, that rate will have come back down again. But again, these numbers are conservative going out to the voters. You're letting them know that you have used conservative estimates here. These aren't pie-in-the-sky estimates. They're pretty much right on. The total building aid estimate is $13,415,430. And again, that's, that would be payable over a 15-year period, and then that is the total amount. So, when we look at the project overall, we looked at, and I've talked to Karen about this a few times back and forth, we're assuming that the district first issues a bond anticipation note in 2025. And because we wouldn't assume that you could do the whole project in one year, we've assumed that you would issue a bond anticipation note, which is a one-year obligation, for approximately $8 million. And then they, and then the BAN debt service is calculated into all these numbers. And then the district would issue the bonds in June of 2026. And the reason for this methodology is because the state aid will not flow until the district has filed its final cost reports. So we're staging this a bit, so that the first year, you won't get any aid, and you will have an interest payment only on the bond anticipation note. But once you go, once you issue the bonds in 2026, then that aid and the bond debt service will start in fiscal year '27, and go out over the next 15 years to 2041.
So there's an initial cash outlay?
Of an interest payment. Now, you can make that payment, you know, you can, yes. It's not really a cash outlay, but that is, that is an interest expense. When you, if we assume you issue those $8 million, the $8 million in bands, and I calculated the interest on that, that would be $300,000 on the interest. If, in a perfect world, we'll figure out a way where we don't even need the bands, because you do have the 1.5 million of the capital reserve money. It's really going to depend on how the project is staged, and when the payments will be due, versus when we feel comfortable issuing the bonds, because we don't want you to pay interest and principal on the bonds when you're not receiving any aid.
It's all timing, but how we did the last project and project before, we didn't need a band. But when you're talking just big of a project, you normally need a band.
And fiscal advisors will work with Karen on all of that?
Depending on the cash flow timing.
Yes. Yeah, we work very closely, and we did on all the prior issues. Because, I mean, we'd like to mitigate any extra expense to the best we can. But you also need the money, you know, depending on what the initial work is, you do need that money to get started typically, so. So, the, so what I've calculated is that, as I mentioned, the first year would be 300,000, but the average annual over those 16 years is the 274,801 that I've put on your sheet. And that overall translates into a tax rate impact of 79 cents per thousand dollars of assessed valuation. Unlike the last project, we, the district had debt rolling off, and so we were able to sort of utilize that debt rolling off. In this case, we don't have any debt rolling off. The bond issues that are outstanding are, you know, have an equal debt service.
What's that mean?
I'm sorry?
What's that mean, debt roll-off?
So, we had an old bond issue that had, that was going to mature, and it was basically costing the district about $300,000 in interest and principal each year. And so when I say it's rolling off, those bonds were maturing. And so that 300,000 was able to sort of transfer over toward the new project, because the district was already paying $300,000 a year. We don't have that, that same situation here, so it's, so the impact is 79 cents. There's no net. I can't come up with a net figure.
So it's an addition to other payments that we would?
It's a change.
Exactly.
That's gonna have a positive impact on the task set formulation.
It will help with the exclusions that you're talking about.
So then we calculated the impact by town for a house assessed at $100,000, and then a house assessed at $150,000. So just remember, those aren't market rates. Those are the assessed value rates.
On your tax bill.
On your tax bill, so. I can go through those if you would like me to, or?
Based on this year's.
Yes, yes. What you sent me for '23, '24, which was great to have those most recent numbers, because a lot of times, we don't. And then the only other thing was, I mentioned no building aid on the greenhouse, and then we will just be working with the architects to make sure that when we're looking at the maximum cost allowances, where sort of the incidentals, some of the incidentals, we feel we might have to try to shift a little from primary to high school, middle school, but we're on top. I want you to know we're on top of all of that, and we'll be monitoring that.
So, question about the greenhouse. Is there any, is there ever an exception, or is that across the board? So we have a lot of instructional programming. We have three agricultural pathways that are CTE pathways that are sanctioned by New York State. And we actually have classes that require, that are part of the use of that greenhouse. So there's no, no way to connect that to instructional space?
Well, I, I mean, I would recommend then that we have a meeting with, you know, with SED.
Okay.
And actually make them understand exactly what goes on there.
Okay.
And then, then?
And our ad teacher happens to be here in the crowd. We just actually, just had our, our plan, so we actually have to have a plan by SED approved every five years.
Okay.
For these pathways, because they're diploma pathways. And so we actually are one of the probably, we have three agricultural pathways, are probably the highest number of pathways in the, I would say, most of the top in the state. So we use that, utilize that a lot.
Possibly a process to get aid on that every little bit. Absolutely, absolutely. It's about $565,000 of the 564,115. So certainly, you know, right now, we're showing zero aid on that. So certainly, any aid that we could get on it. I don't know what your experience has been with greenhouses, but our understanding was?
Sure, yes. John Jojo from Mosaic.
I would say that we had a similar instance over at Greenwich. And we convinced SED to apply that, because of their expansive ag program.
Right.
They can certainly do that on your part.
Yeah, so it's. Say ours rivals, Greenwich. I think, I think we really were the model for theirs, in my opinion, but. It means like, don't start a battle. Say that with all the love that I have for our neighbors.
But I think this is a really good start, and we both communicated that this is very much a graph, pending all this kind of situations that could change. This is kind of worst-case scenario, right? You're very conservative.
It is conservative. It is, yeah.
But I think it's a great.
What are the risks? Say, delay in the project, just more interest? What are the risks associated with this?
Well, we talked about a little bit earlier that we try to come up, try to work with the architects and construction managers and come up with a cash flow. So we never want to be in a situation where we're overborrowing, where we go out and say, you know, we borrowed 10 million, and you didn't use any of it in the whole year. So we really try to work closely with the architects, construction managers, and the business office, and say, you know, what, can we get a monthly cash flow? What do we actually expect to use during this timeframe? And then, you know, I would, and then certainly not issue the bonds until we absolutely know where the project stands, and that, you know, it's feasible to get those final cost reports in by, you know, December 15th, so that that aid would, that full year's aid would flow, you know, in the next, for that fiscal year.
It's important to know, and I think this is, there was confusion in the last project, and I think also with the public, is that we borrow, you borrow as you go. You don't borrow the entire amount upfront. And so I think there was some perception that in the previous project, that we had a big pile of money, $4 million sitting in a pile somewhere, that we had already borrowed, and we had not borrowed that. We left, we left that opportunity to borrow that. So we borrow, we work very closely with the architects, yes. Schoolhouse, our manager, and fiscal advisors, and we're very, very tight and close to the best with how we're borrowing. Karen?
So you reconcile monthly about what needs, is it monthly, quarterly?
Well, typically, when we issue a bond anticipation note, we try to issue it for a full year. So usually that, you know, figuring that all out would happen. Let's say, let's say the project was gonna start in June, in June of 2025, or July, you know, July 1st, say, when school's out. So we would, we would work together and figure out what, what we thought would be a monthly cash flow for that full year. We don't have to do it that way. You don't have to borrow a BAN for a full year. We could say, you know, we, we don't want to overborrow, so we're gonna issue a six-month BAN, you know, and then, and then, or just a smaller amount for 12 months, and then six months later, issue another. There'd be additional costs to issuing the BAN.
Costs of issuing debt.
But, you know, depending on how that was, we could, you know, what I would do with Karen is say, this is, you know, one option, this is option one, this is option two. Not paying interest on that amount is going to be a lot less than what those costs of issuance would be. But a lot of times, you know, when you look at the construction schedule, I mean, it really ramps up in that, you know, when the kids aren't in school. So you really are expending a lot of money in July, August, September. So it would, it would just really depend on the projects and how they were being staged, but.
So you'll optimize, you'll have scenarios?
Yep, right, right.
And this will be our third or fourth project together?
Fourth, yeah. I went back. I was like, I started in 2007, not to date myself or anything.
So, yeah. Been through a lot together, shall we?
And Mosaic and Schoolhouse have, this is an established team, so they, they.
At least brings, I recognize.
Yes. And they know, they know each other's kind of routine, and they know what information Janine will require, and. It's good, that's a good.
I'm glad we asked about the greenhouse, because we were.
Yes.
I just did want to add, just as related to the list, and so thank you, Janine. There are no more questions.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes, we will. I did add, so to our, kind of, we've had this list that we've been working with. So, we've got this pretty up-to-date, but I did add in red, so I think, remember, we discussed last time that one of the challenges with some of that remaining Monday was that we didn't, there were no alternate items that, you know, if there was a case where there was some money remaining. And, you know, I have heard some people inquire and ask, and I don't really know all the details. I know there might be some, you know, Mrs. McGregor and some board members who are on the board. But there still is the question of, you know, why did we not replace the bleachers and put in a press box? And I don't, you know, I think the decision was made at the time, and I'm not sure we need to revisit that, but I think it is something that we could put on the list as a possible alternate. I don't, I will say that we do use that field a lot. We use it for, and I, and my sense was because we merged with football, and we didn't have as many football games. When the money, when it was, you know, the original bids were in, it was determined that it may not be the best use of money at the time. But I do, since I've been here, I do see a lot of use of that field, even for our soccer games. We have very good-sized crowds. It is an expense. It's not a huge expense, but it is an expense, and it's not real pretty, and I'm not sure it really works that great, you know, to have scaffolding. While we do have the one game here, we could possibly negotiate more games if we had that. And I do think having a press box is important, because we could also, you know, if we do have the money at the end to do that, we could host sectionals, and you get reimbursed from the section. So there are some reasons that it would be nice to have more proper seating there. You know, the last time I looked at it, about a year or so ago, and Mosaic might have a better number, but, and this was probably before some of the inflation. It looked like it was probably maybe 100, like a little over 100,000. So, you know, maybe 150 would be a reasonable number to think for the size that we would need here. But I don't, I don't know what your thoughts are on that. So it's not a huge expense, but if there was some money remaining, it might be something that we would want to consider, so I think we should put that on the list, unless the board has an objection or another thought.
It's on the list. I mean, it's, it's hard to be open to that with the future consolidation of the athletic program.
Right. I'm not saying it's a priority, but it is something. But, but even so, we would, we would still, so when, when, you know, during these merges, and as merges come along, you know, a lot of the agreements artists have games in both places and/or practices or scrimmages. And again, when you have a nice facility, you could be possibly host sectionals.
You could have a home game.
Yeah.
Just to have a home game would be really nice.
Yeah. But like, for soccer, for example, we split between Cambridge and Salem. So even though they're the lead, we do have quite a few soccer games here. So, you know, again, I think soccer primarily is a really big, boys and girls, a use of the field. At times, we've done field hockey. So, you know, and again, that opportunity to be, to be able to host sectionals is, you know, does bring in a little money. You know, it's something if we have money left to discuss, and that, we could decide against it, but I would at least put it on there as a possibility. There has been quite a bit of, you know, questioning over the years since I've been here about it.
People are really excited about Greenwich's new field.
Yes, they're getting turf.
Although, at the time, when a lot, when the NFL was considering removing the turf, so, you know.
It looks nice.
And I think anything that might be on the horizon, we should keep those things on that list. Everybody up in the front of everybody's mind.
And, and another thing is, for people to understand, is this is kind of our list that we've targeted. This, you know, there, there will be a lot of open discussions and updates. At the time of bidding, we may not, you know, we may be able to get all of this in and have a very competitive bid, or we may not be able to have all of this on this list, and then we may need to put some things aside, you know, until the project's finished, and then see what's remaining. So again, I'm not sure how clear that was on the last project. And then also, that there's always an opportunity for modifications, improvements, or alterations to current building, or some of the related site work. Depending on when you start the work, sometimes additional work comes to light, as well as possibly next year, during the school year, before we break ground, we will have our building survey that's required by New York State. We feel that we're in pretty good shape, but if, if for some reason something arose that really felt like it was a priority to do at that time, there may be a discussion about adding that in, and this allows that opportunity for that, you know. But, but again, I think, you know, it's my understanding that quite a bit of work has been done, and we don't anticipate there being any real big or major issues. And, you know, as we've discussed, this is the opportunity to improve our building in terms of safety, hardening, upgrading our ADA compliance, and continuing to, and, you know, starting our roof work. Now, so we do have, again, I had asked our architects, so Mosaic, we have John Jojo here and Todd Vogel, and we have Mark Rivers from Schoolhouse Construction. And so I know we have some new board members. There may be questions about items on this list. Do you guys have this list? I know I've sent it, emailed it to you, but if there are questions about the work or, you know, previous work that's been done, this is, this is an opportunity that they could answer any of those questions.
What could go wrong?
If we only knew. You know, this is an extensive list, and it's probably more than one summer. And some of it could go through the school year, but that's a lot of coordination with the school. And, but a lot of this is summer work. Can't do it all in one summer. It's just, that, that's what could go wrong, is we try to take, take of a bite and disrupt the school and not be able to get it trimmed over where we want to get it over. And believe me, I'm not gonna do that.
And when initially, we were talking about, you know, the, the phase two versus doing a new project, and when we were initially starting to discuss this, where there were some initial conversations that we really felt that realistically, this was a two, two summers.
Yeah.
And that will kind of prioritize, you know, as we go along, is how we would sort that out.
And, and the thing is, is one of the problems today, and it's gotten worse since the last project, you just can't get anything nowadays. If we've got any big electrical equipment, mechanical equipment, the lead time on that is just ridiculous. Doors are still 16 weeks. If we're putting FRP doors in somewhere, they're 16 weeks. So, when is the referendum vote?
December 5th.
All right, so December, you start working on it, the first of the year.
We'll go to SED sometime next year, a little earlier, like September.
Okay.
So, construction season next year is not going to happen. So, knowing that in advance, we have plenty of time to get this project approved and bid. Our goal is, is go probably in the winter, which would be like in November or December of next year. That would be great. And then we can do a lot of ordering, and, you know, these 16- or 20-week items will actually be in our conics box by the time we actually need them. So that's usually our game plan. So if we try to rush things, obviously, that's a conversation that we have with the district, knowing that there are some risks that we run by doing that. Typically, the only time when we rush something is if we were in need of a roof, for instance. And roofing materials are usually pretty, they're pretty readily available. And we have some, the contractors that actually work, either on state contract or some other program that's approved by New York State. So we can actually negotiate that price early, and then get those people scheduled also, if we gotta do that kind of with a suit of in life.
Right. No, I'm sorry. All this being said, when we start, you guys put out a timeline, and you give that to the board. I know it's not.
Absolutely, yeah.
But we get a timeline, so we know what the phases are gonna be. So, as far as, they know. They've been through this a million times, so they know how to time this out. So the board is aware of what's going to happen, barring any, right.
How do you figure out where you're starting? Like, what one of these things do you do first? They make a recommendation, do you?
They do. We, we look at it with the timing, and we'll put together a schedule and work with Julie, because this is all inside work. And some of it will be done where it's usable when the kids come back. And we may have to put some nice polish on it and paint it all up, which we would do second shift after the kids are gone. But that's, once we get the plans all put together, that's on me to come up with a milestone schedule that breaks it up, phases it out, so we can look at it together. And if you want to move something that I didn't realize was as high a priority, and I put it the second summer, you wanted the first summer, it's probably doable. And I also weigh in lead times of stuff to at the same time.
And, you know, when you say, and what can go wrong, nobody knows. But I will say that I've heard that, you know, right now, some, from some of my counterparts in the area, that bids have been much higher than they anticipated. Now, when you, when you back it up, a lot of this work was probably done right before the huge surge in inflation. So, because you're really working on this, you know, a year or two out in the. So, because you're really working on this, you know, a year or two out in the costing. I mean, they've been working on this costing for six, you know, we've been working on this list for a while, six, nine months. So I would say, you know, they, they right now have a pretty, I think, we have a 6% inflation, and what was the contingency, 20 or 30%?
A projection.
Yes, it was quite a, it was quite a worst-case scenario. So I, hopefully, our, our bids will not be dramatically, you know, higher than, than we thought, and we have to, you know, a lot of stuff out. But you never know. I mean, it's, it's anybody's best guess.
In history, basically, we had $2 left over.
Right.
Last year.
Right.
Because we did it at the right time, and we did not lose all of the escalation that we had recently.
Right, right.
If we get this on the street at the winter in 2024, get it awarded by December. Contractors are hungry for their next year's work at the end of the previous year. So you're going to get a better, better buy. If we were to put this out on the street in the spring of 2025, I guarantee your price is going to be jacked up, because they're going to know they need to be there in a couple of months, and they got to figure out how to get there.
I think the beauty of this is that a lot of these projects we've already seen conceptualized. Obviously, we've addressed some of the concerns that were brought up in the last one with the new bus drop point, and some of the, you know, the new roof is, is added on there, but that's becoming needed. So I think we already have an idea of, of what this is going to look like, which should make the consumption of it easier as far as, as we're concerned, instead of getting voting, saying, should we, do we want this done earlier, later, whatever? Because we already know what, what a lot of these jobs are going to entail.
We have a new assessment coming out to really make sure we're hitting our priorities.
The building survey?
The survey.
Yes. Yes, there is one. Right. So our previous one, seven, it's going to be almost seven, it's six years old now. So it's usually every five years, but with COVID, they extend the timeline. So it'll be on seven years. And usually, so you would, you would participate.
And complete by the end of the calendar year and submitted by the following March. 24 into 24.
Right. Then, did you assist with the last building survey?
I did.
Yes. So, you know, they're very familiar, again, with kind of what's been done in kind of anticipation of things that may or may not come up. And obviously, we had some big things, other, I mean, obviously, the roof, it's conversation, has been conversation, and that's probably really something that we know is going to go on.
That's a lot of stuff in the previous projects.
So you guys will be the G C's, you know, project managers? So you will be representing the board and Julie in this work, and then you will bring on G C's to approve.
We go out the public bid, and we manage the contractors, the prime contractors, G C, remaining, mechanical, electrical, however we break it down.
So you will approve all work that's being done?
Yes, we manage all of it.
The amount of roof work that we're looking at, do you anticipate one summer or two to finish the roof?
I hope we get it all done in one summer, because it's an abatement project that sides three roof. And this foam roof that we're attacking just doesn't want itself to be patched. It needs to be gone and replaced. We've got, like, like John said, there's a couple of contractors that have state contracts or other means to negotiate with them to get them, and they can man up in real, that project like this.
How many projects are you working on at once?
Schoolhouse, we, we've got a ton of work. I probably have four this, this summer, 24 summer coming up. We're talking 25. I don't know when I'm going to have that.
And that's why.
And we'll have a guy on site. It won't be, I manage a crew of guys on my different projects, and I'll have a guy here on site.
And that's why I reached out to them now, knowing that. So what's happened, working with the architects, now, they said, hey, get in touch with Schoolhouse because they're getting booked out. And so I wanted to make sure, you know, if for some reason they felt like they're, they weren't going to be able to fit our job in, that we could, would have enough time to go out for someone else. And they have committed to us that they will, they will be able to dedicate that time. And so, um, once we get rolling here, we'll, we'll create an agreement with them as well.
I like the fact that we're taking our time with this. We're locking up the right people. The survey's coming out at the right time. Makes sense.
And then again, as we've discussed, once we get this rolling, we have that survey, you know, for anything that's, you know, pending but not critical in the moment, we stick to our list here. And then, you know, we're, again, we're looking that, you know, about every five years, we want to be taking on something. So we're not looking at waiting 20 years as previously. That was a big job, and it was a rough time. You know, you never know what's going to happen, but we want to, we want to be looking, you know, every five years or so. So, you know, once we get going on this, we're almost two years into this one, we start having discussions, you know, most likely this one will be a, like, what are your hopes and dreams? What do we need? But also, what are you looking for? And going out and doing more of a full kind of maybe community kind of participation on that. And that will take some time, and then take some time to kind of cross it out and look at what, you know, bonding and what we can afford. And, you know, so, so then, you know, that will kind of give you timing to breaking ground another, in about five years.
A lot of things on the building condition survey, you'll find that our buildings and grounds can take care. They tick on a whole bunch of stuff right off the list that you don't need to go into a capital project for. So that's what we'll do first, and have those priorities that we can handle and do in-house. So it's not all a major project that you'll find from a project.
And you have capital outlay projects that you could also exercise to pick off some of that stuff.
Yeah.
I know, and it needs to perform stuff. And if you need our help, if we're here, it's easy. We don't mind participating with that. Those are smaller, 100,000, which turns out to be like 80 in real.
We're trying to get it up there to 250, but. Lobbying, we're lobbying for it. Credit around.
A $100,000 capital outlay project just doesn't go past, much past 80 in real, real work, but.
It can do something.
Yeah.
We have to be strategic about it. Hey, any other questions?
The timeline for community forums, when we have these forums.
So, so right now, this is what we have, we have planned. So, of course, this is, this timeline's conceptual. This is pending the board's approval of the referendum at our next regular meeting on October 18th. So if the board, once the board approves a referendum, then we would start the work of campaigning, getting the information out. We need to put notices in the newspaper. So Gina has put out a timeline for that. If the board wishes, I can share that with you in one of my reports. And so we've created a potential timeline of all the communications. We have our, two of our communication specialists from Bosie's in the back, Tara Sullivan and Amy Hopper in the back. So they're already really preparing, they're working on information. So we would draft out a newsletter, the board would have that newsletter to come out, really ideally that last week of October, really announcing these dates. It's an aggressive timeline, but, you know, we're trying to, may not happen, but then we have a Plan B, because there's printers, there's a lot of things involved in that, and, you know, the post office. And so we have other, other means of communication planned as well. So the idea would be the community forum would be on the second. Will be a community presentation to the community here. So trying to get into a few of the communities. So Salem would be here at the school on November 2nd. I've arranged to present at the Rotary Dinner at the Courthouse on the 6th. We've arranged the Hebron Firehouse on the 20th. And we are right now working with the Shushin Firehouse. We've got some possible dates, they're looking, but they need to kind of go out and look at their facility use. So possibly the 8th, between the 8th and the 14th. So that really hits kind of some of the different areas in our district. So if people can't get to Salem, they have some other options. And then, obviously, we're, we'll have a dedicated page with, what's that little thing called down there? That thing? A nav tab for the capital project. So on our new website, so you kind of see high school, elementary school, high school. And we'll have one for capital project. It's an easy click. So we've, we're transitioning that over from the old project to the new project. There will still be a link there that, if you are interested in the old project, it's not disappearing, but you'll have to click on another link. Really, front and center will be this new referendum with the information as we go along the way, and we will also have, we've discussed possibly sending out a postcard in the mail, reminding people about the vote as we get closer towards the end of November. So really, we're working on a communications timeline. We don't have it all ironed out. That's why they're here, to kind of listen on to our plans. And so what's great is that they've been really good about working with us on kind of Plan B, right? Like Plan A, we had a, we had some, we had some, you know, sometimes it doesn't work, technology doesn't work the way you want it, and we apologize for, we had a, we had, I put out an all call yesterday to remind people about this meeting, and we had a little bit of a glitch, and people got many calls. I sincerely apologize for that. And so, so we want to use other means of communication, not just depend on one phone or mail or those, the website.
Hey, they got a call.
Nope. Yeah. I know, we're, we're working on all of that. We're going to get that all cleaned up. They were on it today, so we can appreciate it. So did that answer your question?
Yes.
Are we taking questions from the audience or more plans there?
Well, that's, that was my question. There is no public comments that second, there's, I'll roll my mic.
Actually, this was for an opportunity for the board to receive the information. That gives us an opportunity to think about it as well. But we will have comment on that next week at our meeting, and certainly you could contact the superintendent as well with your questions. You know, where to find me. So thank you very much for your time and continued efforts on this project, and we look forward to our rapid.
Disagreement of information.
Yes. Thank you. I appreciate it. See you soon. Mr. Vogel, I'll be in touch with you before you go on vacation. Thank you.
He's allowed to go on vacation.
Just like I know, so I got to get, got to get on it.
So while moving on to the agenda, I'd like to entertain a motion to entertain the acceptance for the reviewing Salem Central Schools and Indian Ohio and Financial State. If you like this. We do anticipate action after the adjournment.
I know, I was just thinking, how did we go with the reason?
And then we have one action. Entertain a motion to accept the external audit for the 22, 23 school years presented. Motion by Hayden.
Second.
Second by Peter. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify my rating review. Motion carried five zero. And also, last one, entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All those in favor, for the carry five zero, meeting adjourned at 6:32.
Eight minutes.